I'm going to call this meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees to order. A quorum is present in person in the administration building and online. This meeting is available as a video and audio conference in accordance with the governor's suspension of certain open meeting requirements to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. In accordance with the governor's rules, we certify members of the public may attend this meeting in person or watch it live on WISD-TV. Members of the public attending in person may sign up to offer public comments on an agenda item, as is our normal practice, and those who are not attending but wish to provide public comment were given instructions about submitting their comments and writing to Joshua Wuher by email by 10 o'clock last night. Members of the board who are not physically present in the boardroom are participating via a video conferencing application, which allows for two-way communication between those in person and those participating remotely, and all items to be discussed or voted upon have been posted in accordance with state law. If you have any questions about the suspended open meeting requirements, please contact the office of the attorney general by calling 888-672-6787 or by emailing TOMA@OAG.Texas.gov. At this time, the board will go into closed session pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 to consult with its attorney to discuss real property and personnel matters. We will reconvene in open session as close to 7:00 as we can. Thank you. Okay, the board will reconvene in open session from closed session where no action was taken. Next on the agenda is public comments, and I understand we do have one gentleman who has signed up to speak, Mr. Joshua Lee, who teaches at Waco High School. Mr. Lee, will you approach the podium? Thank you for being here.
That's cool.
All yours.
There we go. All right. I'm Josh Lee. I'm a teacher here in the district. I initially wanted to come to this meeting to express my concerns about the proposed calendar for next year, but when I looked at the agenda for today, that's not on the agenda. What was on the agenda was the proposed calendar for the spring, and as I looked at that, frankly, I was shocked in a rare positive way when it comes to teacher workload. News so rare that when it comes, I shared it with my colleagues about the possibility of having additional planning days in the spring. Responses were mostly along the lines of, "I believe it when I see it." While I still have a lot of apprehension about what has been proposed for next year, I wanted to express a certain measure of relief and gratitude to related what has been proposed for the spring semester. Before I go too much further, I want to read you some descriptions I collected last year from a sample of your core subject teachers. Please keep in mind these accounts describe an average workday teaching in Waco ISD last year before your teachers were being required to create online courses from scratch and facilitate online and in-person learning simultaneously. One teacher said, "I get to school at 6:15 a.m., typically leave around 4:15 p.m. That's a 10-hour day for those of you that aren't math people. I go home and do home stuff until about 6:00 p.m. I make my PowerPoint lesson plans, documents for lessons until about 8:00 or 9:00. All in all, I work a minimum of 12 hours a day, sometimes 16." Another teacher says, I have about seven of these, but I won't read them all for you. "I usually get to school around 7:15, work through my conference and my lunch, leave somewhere around 5:30. I spend one to two hours a night working on school and anywhere from three to six hours on the weekends." I'm going to read this last one. "About two hours every weekday outside the 7:45-4:15 day. I aim for about five to eight hours on the weekends total. Try to limit myself to about 13 hours a week outside of school hours so I can spend time with family, et cetera. This often means choosing to leave things underprepared or undone." This last teacher expresses the constant tension many of your teachers feel on a daily basis. "Today, do I choose to be a mediocre parent/spouse, or do I choose to be a mediocre teacher?" Unfortunately for WISD, this teacher and many other good teachers like him left WISD at the end of the year largely due to the pressure of constantly having to make that impossible choice. We are all aware WISD is burning out teachers at a higher rate than the Texas average. While there are many reasons for this, in conversations with my peers, the most common reoccurring factor is the overwhelming amount of time required outside of normal work hours. I took a survey of my peers last year and found that a core teacher averaged, prior to the pandemic, about three hours per day to plan, grade, make parent contacts, attend meetings, and document interventions. To accomplish these three hours of work, your average teacher is given an average of about one hour of unallocated time per day to accomplish these tasks. That is, if, of course, they don't have to give up any of this precious time to attend a 504 or special ed meeting, meet with administrator, tutor underperforming students, which is mandatory in some buildings, cover another teacher's class due to lack of available subs, or heaven forbid, go to the bathroom. WISD has one of the longest school days in the nation. Our secondary students sit through eight different classes for a total instructional day of seven and a half hours, seven hours and 45 minutes with the adjusted schedule for this year. This is nearly an hour longer than the national average, about 30 minutes longer than the state average. Curiously, of the five states with the shortest average school day, about 6.25 hours, all five of them outperform Texas on the SAT, and four out of five of them beat Texas on the ACT. The justification for requiring students to sit still and listen for seven hours a day has typically been that students need more seat time and more class to be successful. While I would argue, and I think data shows, that requiring students to focus and process information for more and more time each day is detrimental rather than beneficial for our students' ability to learn, what has been overlooked, as districts like WISD have constantly expanded the school day further and further, is that every extra 15 minutes, 30 minutes, or hour that students are required to be at school is a 15 minutes, 30 minutes, or hour during which your teachers cannot accomplish that three hours of work that only happens when they are not in direct contact with students. Those three hours a day don't magically get added back into our 24 hours when we leave the school. They come out of our sleep, they come out of our time with our families, or if we have the fortitude to draw boundaries to protect our family, our health, and our sanity, we are forced to live with the choice that we are teaching lessons and activities that we know could be better if we just had the time. The proposed change in the schedule for the spring offers a much-needed reprieve to your teachers and your students, and even though it doesn't address the underlying problem that your teachers aren't being given enough time during the workday to do their jobs effectively, it does communicate that someone downtown is listening, which is much more significant than you might imagine. I would encourage the board and district administration to keep your teachers' psychological well-being in mind as you vote on this proposal, and you work through next year's schedule, particularly as it pertains to the decision to permanently keep that extra 15 minutes, the emergency 15 minutes that was added to the schedule due to the lost time in the fall. With increased teacher retention being one of WISD's stated goals, proposal like the one before, you communicate that you are listening to your teachers, that you care that they are spending more time than ever trying to encourage, push, and sometimes drag our students toward success. Conversely lengthening the school day again and taking precious prep time away from teachers, as is proposed for next year, seems like it would be a massive step in the wrong direction. As you examine these issues, the question before the board and the administration would be, does our motto of "Empower All, Value All" extend to our teachers as well as our students? Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come see us tonight. I know that you submitted those comments online and you chose to come in person. We appreciate that. Thank you. Having been a former teacher, Ms. Cordeley also is a former teacher, Mr. Sykes is married to a teacher. Teaching is incredibly hard job, and the hours, I don't think most people understand that the hours that you have to be spent outside of the school day are incredible. It's a really very time-consuming job if it's done right, like you say, Mr. Lee, and I do believe most of our teachers want to deliver the best instruction possible to our kids. So thanks for taking the time to come see us, and I'm glad to hear that the proposed calendar on the agenda was received well, the changes for the spring. So with that, special recognitions, Mr. Wuher.
Good evening, Madam President, Board. This evening, going to start recognizing Tennyson Middle School musicians who auditioned for the TME All-Region Band for Region 8 in November, competing for chair positions against area middle schools plus two high schools. All nine students who auditioned earned a chair in the 2020 TME Region 8 All-Region Band. Wait for presentation to come up in just a moment, but want to give a big shout-out to Alex DeLeong with percussion, David Diaz also in percussion, Anthony Gonzalez, Oliver Houston, Isaiah Pullen, Isabella Rivera, Eli Ruby, James Tickarot, and Steven Housada, all from Tennyson Middle School, as well as our band directors Kimberly Tucker, assistant directors Matthew Block and Austin Lemmons. Troops from both high school theater departments competed in the Texas Thespian's 2020 State Festival, which was held virtually, over four Super Saturdays, rather, from October through December. Students qualified to compete in the International Thespian Society's national competition based on their performances in the Texas Thespian's 2020 State Festival. This is university's third year in a row to qualify at the national level. This year marks a return for Waco High's troupe, and this is the first year to qualify for national competition. A total of 19 students qualified in the festival's performance and technical events. And to qualify for the national competition, students had to earn a superior rating at the state competition. The International Thespian Festival will be held virtually next June, from the 22nd to the 25th. A big congrats to our national qualifiers from Waco High School, Zaden Clark for duet acting, Roberto Guavara for solo musical along with Vianney Ramos, and Ciara Shaw for duet acting. And for University High, Ashley Acosta for group acting in Elephant's Graveyard along with classmates Jaden Barber, Larry Barber, Bianca Lumeli Contreras, Osvaldo Gonzalez, Victoria Gilde. And for sound design, The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime, Diego Lerma. Jeremiah Marinez for group acting as well in Elephant's Graveyard along with Caitlin McKnight, Tyler Mitchell, Nancy Quesada, Jonathan Rose, Gabriela Strickland, Terrell Thompson, and for stage management in A Monster Calls, Maricela Suarez. And a big kudos to our high school theater directors, Katie Davis, University High, Savannah Jones, Waco High, Glenn Price, University High, and Ashley Elizabeth Vermuyn from Waco High. Each fall, the Advanced Placement Program recognizes high school students who have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through their performance on multiple AP exams. The AP Scholar Award is given to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. AP Scholars with Honor earned an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, including scores of three or higher on four or more exams. And AP Scholars with Distinctions earned an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, including scores of three or higher on five or more exams. Now this year, 27 Waco ISD juniors, seniors, and recent graduates have been recognized as AP Scholars, AP Scholars with Honor, or AP Scholars with Distinction. Harper Hoover, a 2020 graduate from Waco High, was recognized as a national AP Scholar for the second year in a row. To receive that award, a student must receive an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of the exams. Quite an accomplishment. Big congrats to the following Advanced Placement Scholars, Katherine Brooks, Katherine Burnham, Jonathan Carl, Neil Dupuy, Rebecca Heldenbrand, Paris Hookum, Denise Maldonado, Claire Newman, Estefania Pizano, Kailena Ramirez, Genesis Santos, Evelyn Serrano, Brianna Tickarot, Hunter Torres, Isabel Weaver Skiles, Noah Werpani, Kate Ewens. And our Advanced Placement Scholars with Honor, Melissa Moya Martinez, David Roberson, Abigail Zimmerman. And our Advanced Placement Scholars with Distinction, Bridget Eichenberg, Bonnie Gibson, Evelyn Guavara, Harper Hoover, John Martinez, Emmy Scott, and Sophia Schwenke. And we appreciate the work of our Advanced Academics Department, including Ashley Duncan, Director of Advanced Academics, and Carla Donaldson, AP Courtenor. Maximus Austin, a junior at University High School, qualified for and competed in the 2020 UIL 5A State Cross-Country Championship held November 23rd in Round Rock. He placed first at the District 14 Meet, followed by a successful run at the Conference 5 Region 2 Meet held in Dallas last month, qualifying for the state championship. Maximus ran his 5K at the state championship with an impressive time of 16:33:53. Move over to our slide, we have a pretty cool picture of Maximus. Big kudos to University High School cross-country coaches Belinda Denman, Ricardo Felix, Tim O'Leary, and Ricky Perez. The Waco ISD Human, oh, there he is, Waco ISD Human Resources Department launched the new Employee of the Month program earlier this spring, inviting staff from around the district to nominate professional and paraprofessional support staff for their hard work and dedication to our district. Following a brief hiatus, the program was restarted this fall with 83 nominations received in just the first round. Due to the brief pause and such an overwhelming response of submissions for employees, two professional staff members and two members of our paraprofessional support staff were surprised with the announcement that they had been selected as Waco ISD's Employees of the Month for November, starting off with Clara Palacio, a clerk for the Facilities and Maintenance Department, selected because she was, quote, "the ultimate team player whose uplifting attitude sets the tone for the office." Also Pamela Williams, a reset aide at West Avenue Elementary School, she was selected because she goes above and beyond daily, she has always found the sunny side of life, and her nominator considers her irreplaceable due to the impact she's made on West Avenue students, parents, and staff. Lacey Maryfield is a biology teacher and volleyball coach at University High School who has stepped up this year to navigate remote learning. We can actually go a few slides. Now Coach Maryfield has become the resident canvas, there she is on the right, canvas expert at the campus, working across departments to assist other teachers with the new learning management system, creating videos and sharing resources. In addition to teaching and coaching roles, she also serves as the biology team lead and is considered truly extraordinary. And Rhiannon Settles serves as Director of Health Services for Waco ISD, and according to the nomination, she's also Wonder Woman, which I concur with. Rhiannon's role has shifted over the past eight months to include managing and guiding the district through COVID-19 health and safety protocols, contact tracing and rapid testing. Her nominator notes she is always very positive and kind and is generous with her time and energy. Rhiannon leads the district's team of nurses with true strength, knowledge, and exemplifies what a true leader should be. A huge congrats to our four November Employees of the Month. There's Rhiannon, picture with her husband Brad, also a teacher, so congrats to them. And finally, this evening, Waco ISD's theme for the 2020-2021 school year is "Empower All, Value All." That theme reflects the district's mission to provide an educational foundation that empowers and values all. It celebrates learning and growing as students, professionals, and individuals. Waco ISD recognizes that when individuals feel empowered and valued, their ability to overcome challenges, grow, and succeed is strengthened. We also recognize that no individual or organization can thrive and accomplish their goals or missions alone. Instead, we are at our best when families, employees, and the community join together to realize shared hopes and dreams to empower and value all students and staff to support their future. We have scores of community partners who are deeply invested in the district's staff, students, and their success each month. We gladly recognize Good Community Partner Making a Difference with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partner. In December, we're recognizing The Cove. The Cove was founded in 2015 by former Waco ISD homeless liaison Cheryl Poole to fill a need for students experiencing homelessness. Along with the lack of stable housing comes limited access to food, medical care, transportation, and access to healthy relationships with adults. The Cove provides a safe, nurturing environment for high school-aged youth, fulfilling basic needs such as dinner and access to laundry appliances and showers while also providing tutoring, homework assistance, and access to transportation to and from temporary housing locations. Their programs and services also seek to provide support for students' mental, physical, and emotional health. By working with them on goal-setting and providing guidance and assistance along the way, students are able to work toward obtaining driver's licenses, job certifications, complete job applications, and prepare for interviews. Go to the next slide, we'll see Executive Director Kelly Atkinson and her staff accepting the award virtually. Now, since serving its first cohorts of students in October 2016, The Cove has served 256 Waco ISD students. Next year, the organization will expand to identify and serve high school-aged youth experiencing homelessness across McLennan County. We thank them for their service to Waco ISD, and congratulations to The Cove, our December All right, that'll do it. Congratulations to this month's honorees.
Thank you. Dr. Kim Cannon, Superintendent's Report.
All right. Good evening. I wanted to preview the item on the 2020-2021 instructional calendar, and Mr. Lee, you could stay if you wanted to hear that. You may not have all of the information, but later on the agenda, we do have an item to recommend, revised 2020-2021's calendar for this school year. That's going to do two things. First, it will add four remote learning days for the spring semester. As of December 10th, the state has allowed a waiver and will be asking you to approve, authorize me to submit a waiver for those remote learning days. We can ask for a waiver for up to 2,100 minutes. That will allow our teachers to take care of our students remotely and give them a little bit of relief from having to do remote and in-person on those four days. And so we want to take advantage of that opportunity for that waiver. And then also, we are asking for three teacher in-service slash planning days for our teachers in the spring semester. We have enough minutes to do that, and so we do want to do that. And then finally, of those three days, I would like to offer our teachers and those who are on a professional contract, our nurses, our counselors, instructional specialists, and dyslexia specialists, the opportunity to comp out of two of those three days. So we need the first one that's on the calendar for February 26th for data disaggregation and some assessment work, but there are two other days, one in April and one in May, that we would allow our teachers to comp out of. So we know teachers need that time for planning and for work, but we trust them as professionals to do that work, so if they wanted to use those days for personal time, then they could do that. So that item will come up later on the agenda. We wanted you to hear that. The next item I have is rapid testing, and wanted to mention that as of early November, Waco ISD was one of fewer than 100 school districts in the state to opt into the COVID-19 rapid testing program. And as of today, we have administered 2,652 tests, and 167 of those have been positive. After being resupplied by the state in late November, we still have more than 15,000 test kits on hand. The district offered drive-through testing for all students and employees the day before classes resumed after Thanksgiving break, and then again this past Sunday. There were 329 people who took advantage of the opportunity before Thanksgiving. Of those, we had 20 tests positive. This past weekend, 289 tested, and again, there were 20 positive cases. That's notable because many of the people who tested positive were asymptomatic or had very mild symptoms and would have otherwise been on campus the following day. Testing will be available for both staff and students before we reopen for in-person instruction after the break. All of our employees will have an opportunity to test on campus during our in-service day on Monday, January the 4th, and we'll be sending more information on drive-through testing opportunities for students in the near future.
Any questions about either of those items?
We're also implementing new CDC guidelines. There were two options released to reduce the quarantine period for people who've been identified as close contacts of someone who've tested positive for COVID-19, and these allow someone who was identified as a close contact to end the quarantine period after day 10, as long as they don't have any symptoms that could be a sign of COVID-19 or after day seven, as long as they don't have any symptoms and they test negative for COVID-19. We've adopted both of those options for our employees, and we are evaluating whether or not to adopt the 10-day quarantine period for students starting in January.
Any questions about quarantine periods?
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to mention our two high school coaching vacancies. We posted head football coach for University High School and Waco High School on December the 7th. The deadline to apply is January the 8th. We've had a good amount of interest so far in those positions. I think most of the applicants are applying for both, although there are a few who are selecting either Waco High School or University High School. We'll be working through that hiring process in January, and we hope to introduce new head football coaches to you at our meeting on January the 28th. Next item I wanted to mention this evening was regarding EIC Local, our Class Rank Policy. I want to thank Robin Houston for participating on the committee that we have, working on that. We do have teachers, parents, and students who have been reviewing our local policy on calculating class rank. They've met twice to discuss the current policy, and we'll continue meeting after the break to discuss potential changes, and we hope to bring you a revised policy for consideration early 2021. We also wanted to just point out that the United Census Bureau has indicated that the release of the data files needed to redraw trustee boundaries will be delayed at least six weeks until April 1st of 2021. It will delay the process, and our Council for Redistricting, Mike Morrison, does not believe that that will impact the 2022 election calendar. And then finally, I have given you a new set of dates for 2021 for the board meeting, and the only changes there were the addition of the community advisory committees, which will begin on January 11th, and those are board, will be posted as board meetings. So those were added to your calendar. And then last item I have is just to provide you with the community advisory committee list. I want to thank you for submitting your recommendations. You have the list. It's a very comprehensive representation of our community, and I think you should be pleased with how that, with the names and the representation from all kinds of organizations along with parents and staff. I've had the opportunity to speak with most of the committee members, and I plan to send out a formal communication tomorrow to each one of them. So any thoughts or comments or questions about any of those items this evening?
I just want to comment on our community advisory committee. This is such an extraordinary group of people, and I spoke to quite a few of these people as well, and no one told me no. I don't think anybody told either one of us no, even when they learned that we were asking them to meet from January to June. So I'm really excited for this group to get together, albeit on Zoom. There is a bit of pressure, though, on O'Connell-Robertsen. I know that Jared's here tonight because I really sold you guys, on all of our committee members, about how interesting and fun it was members, about how interesting and fun it was going to be. But I really have no doubt it's going to be good work, and it's a good group, and it's going to be really a timely conversation about the needs of our facilities and how we can do better for our kids. So, if any member of the board, in seeing the list, sees someone that they'd like to include, let Dr. Ken Cannon know. I think the letter is going out tomorrow informing each of the committee members more about the process, when we will be meeting, and giving them just contact information should they have any questions. So, if there is someone that you see or thinking of someone now that you'd like to include, be sure and let her know so that they get the letter along with everybody else. It's a great group, and it's going to be good work. So, excited about that. Okay. Unless anybody has any questions about the committee. Okay. We'll move to the consent agenda. No one asked for any item to be pulled, but it's not too late. Is there anything that anybody would like to pull for discussion? Okay. So, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewag and Mr. Sykes. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Dr. Ken Cannon, consider, discuss, take appropriate action regarding proposal for community engagement and facilities master plan process, which is what this community advisory committee for long-range facility planning will be working on. And I know that our architect, he's right there. All right.
Sure. So, I think we spent some time last month outlining the process for long-range facilities planning. Since that time, I have received the proposal from O'Connell-Robinson Architects. So, I would just ask Jared just to briefly describe that, and then we'll ask, we'll take any questions that you all have.
Sure. So, tonight, we have a proposal in front of you, taking you through an exciting, engaging, lovely process about facilities and numbers and years out in front of us. So, what we are planning to do is really build on the information that was developed through what we're terming the District Facility Snapshot, which is the current status of the facilities within Waco ISD, and take the committee through a similar process of understanding where facilities are at, the condition they're in, how they're supporting students, start looking at the future moving forward, and ultimately cast a vision like we described last month through that process of where do we want to and how do we want to support the students of Waco ISD in a 10- to 15-year process. And so, that is really what the facility master planning process would be. We are looking through strategies of engagement and discussion as we're sitting through Zoom and trying to find that balance of how we work moving forward to make sure that we get good input, we explore all options and opportunities, and ultimately try to get resolution for the committee to bring a recommendation back to the board moving forward. So, that is the first portion of the effort. And then, as we move into the second portion, that really gets into the bond planning services, which is where we would take that long-range plan and start looking at a smaller chunk that could be facilitated within a bond program if the committee so chooses, if the board so chooses. Again, nothing is written in stone at this point. It's really about a discussion moving forward. So, we would ultimately look to bring a recommendation for a facilities master plan, where do we want to end up in the 10- to 15-year plan, and then a recommendation for this is what we think is an appropriate amount and scope of work to be supported within a bond that would be brought to the Board of Trustees for consideration. At that time, if the board so chose, we would then work with the district through election planning services of, in essence, making sure that we get media in contact and those type of informations out, as well as then bond communication services of how are we communicating? As you can't be an advocate for the bond, but we can make sure that we're getting all the things right and supporting the district in those efforts. And so, depending upon the schedule, we could look at either, right now, I know the district is talking about either November of '21 election or May of '22 election, and so, we have flexibility in working with that as long as the committees are aligned with those efforts.
Great. So, we're recommending the board approve the engagement of O'Connell-Robinson for this process of community engagement and facilities planning, master plan processes as presented in the agreement.
So, move?
Second.
Second.
Was that Ms. Cordewag? Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Any questions? I just want to emphasize something that you said and something that I emphasize to anyone that I've talked to about the committee is, we haven't made any decisions about whether to hold a bond election or not, or what would be included in it, or for how much. And we're really depending on the engagement of this committee to give us feedback so that we can make those decisions. But I just want to reemphasize that you've already done a lot of work to get us to this point, so thank you. But the committee is really integral to the process moving forward, and we're looking forward to, I'm looking forward to it, and I know and trust you guys are going to do great work, and it's exciting.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody else have any question?
Just real quick.
Yes.
Yeah. I want to concur with that. I think that the work done so far and presented to the board and the discussions and participation you've had so far has been extremely beneficial to us as we move into this process. After seeing the response and where we're headed in terms of the community engagement and the committee, and their ability to work with you closely as well as the administration and keeping the board informed, I think it bodes very well for those future discussions and putting a package together that we'll be able to consider for the future. So, I'm really impressed with the work so far. A lot more work to do, and we appreciate it.
Thank you as well. We're looking forward to it.
Okay. Well, unless there's any further discussion, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely. We're excited. Yes, ma'am.
The calendar, which we've already mentioned a couple of times tonight, item nine. Dr. Ken Cannon.
Yes. You do have a copy of the proposed calendar in your board packet, and I'll just point out those dates for you. April, excuse me, for the three additional planning days, they would be February the 26th, April 12th, and May 17th. The 12th and the 17th would be the two days that our teachers could comp out of, and that would include our professionals who are on a teacher contract. And I've listed those in the memo for you, instructional specialists, dyslexia specialists, nurses, and counselors. And then, the orange days that you see there in February and March the 5th, and April 30th and May 28th would be remote learning days as allowed by a waiver from TEA pending the board's approval tonight, which would not quite use all of the 2,100 minutes that we could use, but it would be about four days worth, about 18, I think it was like 1,860 minutes. So, we recommend the revised calendar and ask that you authorize, Superintendent, to submit a waiver to TEA for those additional remote asynchronous instructional days.
I move that we adopt the calendar, we authorize the calendar, and that we also ask for the waiver from TEA as proposed.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Cordewag. Is there any further discussion?
I would just like to thank the administration for listening to the needs of the teachers and our faculty on campus, and I would even say some of the students and parents. Really appreciate, I really appreciate that, and I think the teachers, just as Mr. Lee had said, the teachers will see, I think staff will see that, and it is a shot in the arm, a boost, I think, for, in terms of morale, that the district is really trying to accommodate and, I guess, just help them, for lack of better words, just give them a little bit of a lifeline. So, thank you. I really appreciate that.
And I mean, I would say wholeheartedly as well. I mean, I'm somebody who, I'm not a teacher myself, but my mother was a career teacher, and I have both a brother and a sister-in-law who teach in public schools, and it's a rough year. And so, I want to applaud the administration for, you know, giving a lifeline to our teachers. And we can't really, I can't appreciate what it's like every day, but I do know how hard it is, and I've just seen so many teachers just dig in and just do amazing things. So, we really appreciate you, and I think that this is, I think the administration appreciates you as well.
Thank you.
It's been a long time since I've heard someone in public comment come to thank the administration for listening. So, you know, his original comments were not, had a different spin until he took a look at the calendar that's being proposed for the spring. And while, you know, we still have done take care of everything, it is, certainly shows that you are responding, and we're doing the best we can to meet the needs within the structure that we have been given by TEA.
Yeah. Thank you for that. We actually, our team made some phone calls randomly to teachers a few weeks ago just to listen, to see what the needs were, and we've been having weekly conversations about what we can do to help teachers. And, you know, we feel like this is something we can do and we want to do, and the comp day is really just to demonstrate our appreciation for the work that our teachers have done already this year, and we know we're not done with this pandemic yet, so that we have a few more hard months ahead of us.
Voted, have we? Okay. All those in favor of the calendar and waiver, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Cornblin, do you know your up? Virtual learning. I know that this is, again, kind of the segue, virtual learning's hard on everybody, and I know that, well, there was an article in the paper today about virtual learning and doesn't work for all kids, and it just isn't the best. We prefer to have everybody here to the extent they can be. But, so anyway, that's probably more than I needed to say. Virtual learning update.
We tested this. There we go. Okay. So, we wanted to start by just sharing our numbers and where we are and how the instructional choice has changed since we began. So, in September, when we first started the year, you can see that we had around 8,263 students request to be in-person and 6,259 for remote. And then, you can see that our in-person request has been higher than our remote, and currently right now, we have 9,766 in-person and 4,840 remote. And so, our enrollment right now is 14,606, and so, that represents about 67% of our kids who are choosing in-person instruction right now. So, although we do have a lot of students in-person, that remote number still reflects a lot of students at home, and some struggles are wrapped in there that we'll talk about in a sec. So, something important to note here that is, makes this challenging is that each time a student's instructional choice changes, it also changes and affects what the teacher has to do in class. So, let me give you an example. At the elementary level, more so than at the secondary level, some of our teachers have been able to teach just a remote class versus an in-person class. So, by the way, they decide to team, one teacher might have the face-to-face students, you know, one block and the other teacher who, let's say, maybe that was the reading teacher, and then their counterpart who might teach math might be teaching remote instruction during that time, and then they switch, and then one, you know, they do the opposite. But when that instructional choice changes, and depending on how big the classes get with the students coming back, then that teacher might also have to change her instructional methods or his instructional methods as well. So, it, you know, I think the name of the game this year has been flexibility all the way around, and so, it affects what our teachers are having to do each time those change. So far, what we've done is there's a two-week window at the end of each six weeks where students can make that change or request that change, or parents can. But also, our principals are trying to be flexible with families to meet their needs when they have a family who may need to change in the middle of a grading period as well. So, our overall attendance rates, and we'll break it down by level after this slide, but right now, our overall attendance rate is 86.33. In-person's a bit higher, we can see at 91.02, and then our remote attendance rate is 82.6. What I want to say about the attendance rate is that this is kind of a moving target, and so, hold that thought, and I'll explain that in a little bit. But this has been also one of the more, I think, difficult things to monitor during this time period. So, at, this slide shows the breakdown by levels of school level. And so, when we look at remote, we have at the bottom, our elementary, our attendance rates are better at that level, at about 91.9. If you look at middle school and high school, and we average those together, that's about 74% or so. And so, our elementary students are about 18% higher in their attendance rate for our remote than our secondary campuses. And then, when we look at in-person, again, elementary students, our attendance is a bit higher there. If we look at middle and high school together, that's around 87%, and so, elementary is about 7% higher than them there for in-person. And of course, that overall rate, you know, still reflects the same. Of course, there are some things wrapped into that. Elementary, parents' work, and so, you know, students can't stay at home alone, and so, that, I think, also impacts students being at school. But, go ahead if you can change this slide. This is the hardest part, the hardest part. Back one, please. Tracking attendance, and this is incredibly hard at the secondary level because students have until 11:59 each evening to finish their work. That's a TEA guideline. And as long as they engage and complete their work by 11:59 that night, they can be counted present for that day. Teachers have up to five days to go back and change the coding of attendance for that day. So, it's been time-consuming on the teachers' parts because they're tracing back to see if a student actually completed that work while... While, you know, on one hand, of course, we want to do that because we want to count all attendance that we can. But on the other hand, that is one extra thing that our teachers are having to do. Now, I will say that, and Patrick Upmore and, and our P M's department has worked different methods and tried different ways to help them make this easier. But it's still something different and it's hard. And so, I'll say it's a moving target because whatever the attendance was on Monday, that, that day is not final necessarily until five days later. And so, we were talking earlier that really your only, I guess, accurate attendance number would be at the very last day of the semester, of both semesters. Because you wouldn't have any more, you know, your five days, or five days after that. So, that, that's been difficult. Okay, our failure rate, um, and, and just like attendance, because we're, students have a time period to make up work, so to speak, and the, and for teachers to go back in and, and count that work. And there's been a change in this slide since this was last updated. Or since, since you received it, Dr. Kinkanen, there was an update. And so, when we look at our failure rate, and what this means is that a student has failed at least one or more courses. So, um, overall, during our first six weeks, we have 33.2% who failed at least one course. And then our in-person, 27.2. And as you can see, our remote learners, we have a more significant failure rate with our students who are attending remotely. And that's the same for the second six weeks. If we were to look at this same time period last year and look at our failure rate at where we were sitting last year as compared to now, and just compared to our in-person students, because really, we didn't have remote then, so that's our best comparison. We're about 14 percentage points higher this year than we would have been last year between overall failure rates last year to our in-person now. So, consistency and engagement contributes significantly to the success. So, though we know that having to quarantine and, you know, doing all of those things are necessary, you know, it, it also is disruptive in a sense. And so, that constant change is, is, you know, something that we have to consider. And then, and also just for students who may make an instructional change at the end of one six weeks versus another. And so, it just, um, you know, all of those, all of those issues are wrapped into this. So, Dr. Kinkanen mentioned that, um, we called out to, um, teachers across the district and conducted some empathy interviews with them. And so, really, when I, we first started calling, um, I expected to hear certain things. And I did hear some of those. I think we all did with, you know, just the struggle to do both types of instruction and such. But what personally I heard more of was the time that they're putting in, not just planning lessons, but tracking down students and trying to help, to help them be successful. Um, because those are phone calls that are being made after hours. And so, um, we kind of put our heads together to say, what else can we do? You know, not that things weren't already being done to try to help students be successful, but what else to try to alleviate some of that, um, you know, from campuses having to do some of that and, and help them out a bit. So, um, after one particular meeting, when we have principal meetings, the principals are present as well as the, um, the directors from each department. And so, the curriculum and instruction department has a director's meeting after each principal meeting. And so, we sat and after that meeting and said, what could we do from a district standpoint to maybe help campuses in a way that we aren't, you know, already? And so, um, we came up with some different levels of support that we hope will take some of the burden off of them a bit. So, um, engagement's a tough one. But one of the things that we were talking about, because we have some folks who work in the district who, um, they may have students who are remote themselves. And what they were talking about was the fact that, you know, their child has had possible trouble managing themselves with remote instruction. What do I do each day? When I sit down, how do I manage my time? Especially if they're an older child who may be at home alone while their parent works. So, we thought, well, how could we help them organize and maybe be more structured? So, at the elementary level, each campus, or each student, rather, is going to receive a, um, I'll call it a, a learning packet in a way, more, it's more of a management packet. So, at the elementary level, we're receiving, or they're, they're receiving an erasable placemat. So, envision kind of a placemat that you would have at the dinner table. But it's laminated and it will have icons on it that are very elementary geared toward them. Um, K through two and then three through five. But each of those icons represent a task that they're to do during the day to approach their day. And then, um, the other part of that, that will accompany that will be parent questions. So, questions specifically directed to parents to ask their child about their learning. And so, um, that, that will go home. Um, and then at the secondary level, um, because we knew that the older students probably wouldn't like a placemat, we are sending them a, um, kind of a planner, but it'll be more in a tablet format. But on that planner will likewise be things to help them organize their day. So, what Zooms do I have today? What assignments do I have today that are due? What are due long-term? You know, do I need to check in with someone? Um, kind of a task and to-do list. So, a little bit more grown up, but to help them kind of start managing themselves. Also, questions for parents. Um, and I think questions for parents at the secondary level are so important because my own children, if I were to come home, if they were staying and learning at home, and I said, would have said, did you do your, um, you know, your work today? Well, of course I did. And so, these are a bit more directed questions that, um, they still, they still might tell them, yes, I did. But, um, they'll, they'll still be a little bit more specific to what the student needs to do that day. So, those are the first two things that we're going to try to help with. And then, go ahead. So, we continue thinking, and we were thinking about tutoring. Um, how could we help? And so, tutoring is available on campuses, but at the same time, if our students aren't engaging with their classwork, it is, you know, not hard to think that they probably wouldn't be engaging with their tutoring either. And so, um, Courtney Parnell, who is the Director of Dyslexia 504 and Intervention, um, reached out to Estella Maxi, Kate Ross, um, South Terrace, and, um, the Waco Boys and Girls Club, and has arranged for, um, two nights a week. And I'll share the times on the next slide. But for us to send folks out and meet in their locations and offer tutoring for those who want to engage. So, um, we're hoping that they will, but, um, that will start when we get back and at the second semester. So, for secondary, that will happen on Tuesdays from five to seven. Elementary on Thursdays from five to seven. And then, um, our technology department, we're working with them to see if we can get folks out to also help parents with technology-related issues that they might be having. And then, um, those who, um, I'll say volunteer, but it, they will be paid. But to go out and tutor, um, will be paid our standard, um, rate for, um, working overtime. Um, another, uh, just topic that came up was that we really just need to flood, you know, all outlets. Um, and so, really hitting mail, um, home visits. So, that home visit piece, this sounds, um, I don't know, it might sound a little crazy. But we are, um, a lot of our kids, let me go back. They're, you know, folks are calling, but they're not answering. And so, how do we reach those students? And so, we are narrowing it down to our remote learners who are not engaged, who aren't, aren't passing. And so, um, we've worked with communications really on all of this. But we're developing a, a door hanger, like a salesman might leave hanging on the door, that basically has the, a mini version of the checklist and questions on that. And then they'll receive their mail package also. But to try to, hopefully, when we knock on the door, someone's there. But to just touch base with them and say, you know, hey, we need you back, or we need you to engage. Um, and so, the curriculum department will be delivering those. And when I say curriculum department, that's all the way from the instructional piece all the way down to fine arts. And so, we're dividing out and conquering where that's concerned. And they're just really trying to get the, the message out. And we've pegged Dr. Kinkanen for a commercial, so, so really getting the message out. I'm using our Waco I S D T V and, um, all of those resources that we have available to us. Um, a couple of things that some of our, um, other departments within C and I are doing. So, special education, we'll be planning Zoom parent meetings to try to help their parents have resources to help their students, sending out messages, um, through text. It seems to be that text gets a lot of, um, I guess, support. Like, people read their text messages, even though, um, we may not be talking with them. That is one avenue that seems to be, um, effective. And then, our English Learners Department, they have already started parent meetings, really at the secondary level because ultimately, we're concerned about students graduating. And so, ensuring that our kids are earning their credits. And so, um, Ms. Benson's office has already had meetings. They're offering them twice during the day when they do it once midday and then once in the afternoon. Kind of in the evening hours to help. And then, um, she's also creating parent videos to go on the website to, um, help those parents. So, the, um, personal outreach, this, this is one area where we really heard our teachers struggle to, you know, they're going home, making all of the phone calls and such. And so, we were wondering, is there a way to help around that? So, we have a lot of substitutes who are not wanting to work right now because they're afraid to, you know, they don't want to be on campus. And a lot of our campuses have trusted substitutes who aren't working for them, but they usually do, and they value them. And so, we are going to use some of our federal funding to have them make calls home, additional calls home, creating a script for them to follow, um, to try to do additional outreach for campuses. We're going to start that at the secondary level first, um, because that's where this problem is most significant. And then, just again, that the hope is that it will take some of the burden off of campuses. Not that they won't still be making outreach, but, um, we just want to add to that. And then, um, you've heard this mentioned earlier, um, because Ms. Maryfield, um, received a recognition earlier. But on our teacher's side, you know, it, um, we have gone one-to-one overnight, basically. And so, with that came a steep learning curve. And so, one of, um, our struggles, even though, you know, there was training, but it was basic training, of course, um, is our, our teachers' understanding of how to use Canvas effectively, but not just use it effectively to where they're not spending hours trying to make lessons on Canvas. But there's a backside to that as well. It also needs to be easy for our parents and students. Um, I was at a certain campus helping a student, um, it was a secondary, um, middle school. And, um, I was helping the student one day, and she was looking for a file, and I, it was like a scavenger hunt that day. Now, when we first started, we did send a basic template, but I think everybody was on such overload at that time that they were full. And so, with that being said, though, this is better than what we initially created. So, what you're looking at, and I wish I could get you into Canvas to see this because it's really, um, pretty amazing. So, both University High School and Waco High School, um, and, and Dr. Robin Wilson at, um, at the district level kind of took this and ran with it, they have worked to develop a Canvas, kind of a master template. And so, this is the front page of Ms. Maryfield's template. And then, um, at Waco High School, Ms. O'Neill has been helping. And so, they've developed this master course that the second semester, teachers will be able to basically copy into their Canvas and roll that, roll that out as their courses roll over. Now, what's special about this is that, once they have the master class, I'm here, you see it, um, called blueprinting. And it kind of is a blueprint. So, what that allows teachers to be able to do is when they update assignments in that master class, that updates into all other classes. What they were doing is going into this class and then their next class and then their next class, and having to put all of that in separately. And this way, they put it in once. And if they tell it to do so, it will push to their other classes that are the same as that class. And that should save them a ton of time. But then also, things will be located in, um, one way across the whole secondary level, which will help parents and students. And then you heard mention of this, um, I, a little bit earlier. So, T E A has, um, now allowed districts to cancel remote instruction for students who are having, um, issues with failing classes or attendance. And, um, this is something that our principals really want to do. And so, we are going to implement that. And as you saw with our failure rate, I mean, we need them back. Some of our students, um, are just, you know, their learning gaps are too great. And so, we need to be able to address that with them. So, beginning the second semester, um, that's when the students will be asked to come back. But that process begins, well, some have actually already started to send the letters. But, um, for students who have a 70 or below in any, any class, um, or five or more unexcused absences in a grading period, will be asked to return. And so, that is, um, the policy that Waco I S D was following. Um, T E A and their model that they sent out, um, the 70 or, or below was in there, rather, um, their suggestion was three or more unexcused. But if you're at a secondary level, at the high school, you can rack up five or more in a day, almost. And so, um, we, we, or three or more, or five. But we chose the larger because it's just more manageable. The caveat to this is parents have to be given a two-week notice before you ask a, um, or require a student to come back, during which time they can request an appeal. And so, um, an appeal can be done in two ways. They can submit a medical exemption form, or they can request a transition meeting to talk about the reasons behind the return. And then, um, after that, there's a, a decision that's made for the parent. So, any questions about that piece before I move forward? Okay. And so, as I said, the things that we mentioned earlier are just additional ways that we want to try to help campuses. You know, maybe, maybe relieve some of the burden for them. Things that are already happening on campuses, though, this year, um, Ms. Parnell, again, was really working on our M T S S plan, which is basically our intervention plan, um, which M T S S stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. And, um, we have more defined Tier Two and Tier Three interventions this year. Um, at the elementary level especially, secondary level, um, students are still, um, receiving intervention through assigned classes. Um, there's a bit of master scheduling that needs to be addressed there at the secondary level. It's just a little bit trickier. But, um, they were already receiving those supports. And then, campuses, many are tutoring now. So, about 52% of our campuses are offering tutoring twice a week in some form. It may be reading one day, math one day, um, in different, you know, various ways. Um, four additional campuses are planning to start when we return in January. And the remaining campuses, um, haven't fully rolled out their plan yet, um, as to what they'll be doing. That is the end of the virtual learning update. Any questions?
I have one quick, kind of quick question. Um, you were talking about the, them kind of standardizing the Canvas interface so it's easier for teachers and parents. Is it still the case that it's not talking directly to teams? And so, they have to, like, still enter all that information? It's not feeding directly?
I am going to actually, can I phone a friend and ask Mr. Alan? Is Canvas not talking to teams directly? Canvas does not.
Because I think that's another piece that's really frustrating, both the teacher and a parent perspective, is is you, you have work that you can't tell if it's been turned in or not turned in because it doesn't sync automatically with Teams. And so I, I don't know that, I'm sure this is a problem a lot of people that, that sort have, even if you're trying to kind of keep up with what your child is doing or not doing. There's really no way to do it in real time because what Canvas calls assignments and what Teams calls assignments aren't necessarily the same. And the teachers have to go through an extra level to get the grades inputted into Teams. And, I mean, I'm not sure that that's something that can be addressed along with the other things that are being addressed, but I know that that's probably frustrating for the, the teachers. I know it's, can be frustrating for the parents as well.
Um, there are a couple of different ways that, that teachers can easily move their grades from Canvas into Teams. Um, one is they can download it, their grades right from Canvas into a spreadsheet and then upload that spreadsheet right into Team, into Teams and into their gradebook. Um, there are various other ways that they could do that. They want to, uh, give us a call at the, at, at Technology Building. We'll be more than happy to walk them through that step process. Um, there's also a parent portal for Canvas and a parent portal for Teams. Um, the parent portal for Canvas, um, parents can log in and see in real time whether or not a student has done the work or not as well. So, um, we can definitely get that information out to you.
Okay.
But they don't talk.
They don't talk.
The two programs don't talk to each other. Would you address that, Jerry?
Um, they, so, well, originally they were supposed to. Um, and that's what we were told was going to happen. But Teams has been, um, a challenge, um, to say the least. Um, frontline, uh, when frontline bought Teams, um, we thought it was all going to get a little bit better. And it has in fact become, uh, much more convoluted with, with, uh, the way that they provide support. Um, but Canvas and Teams both are working on, uh, a product that will be a bridge to both of them. It's just a matter of when those programmers can get that done.
Thank you. And that, that's a challenge. Um, we have a challenge with some of our student management software across the board, really. Um, some of it's us, um, not learning the system over time. And then some of it, we think, is the system itself. And so you might have noticed in the district improvement plan that we may investigate some other options for the future. But that's a significant transition that we, you know, we couldn't have taken on this year.
It, it, those types of transitions and, and, uh, mission critical software like that sometimes will occur and get more convoluted, um, because you're trying to make it the way that it was with the previous one. You're trying to make the new one like the old one, um, instead of doing what the new one is supposed to do. Um, and I think that's what happened is, you know, one of the, one of the biggest issues with Teams is that it is so customizable, um, that becomes a problem in itself. When you have several programs that are out there that are state, uh, uh, approved, like Skyward and Texas, um, those are ones that are, uh, more user-friendly. And, um, they have thousands and thousands of canned reports that you can get very easily without having to have a programmer do SQL to get to the database. So.
And I know that Ms. Cornbloom struggled with that. We've struggled, and Patrick in the PMS department just trying to pull together attendance and failure rate data. So we do have some software issues. Um, and so Mrs. Houston is absolutely right. The two systems don't talk to each other and that is creating some problems for us.
My question to him was, do they update at midnight? Like, you know, do they? And he said midnight till two o'clock. Do grades roll at that time?
As far as?
If they've entered them in Canvas, are they rolling to Teams at that time?
They won't, they won't roll until a teacher actually puts them in there. They don't talk like that. The only way that, it's a one-way communication from Teams to Canvas as far as rostering students. And that's it. So it'll put them in the appropriate thing, but it won't write back into Teams yet. And that's the bridge that they're building together right now. And they've just been real slow to do that. They've probably gotten overwhelmed, which most people did with COVID when everybody jumped on board, um, with all of a sudden trying to do an LMS. And so it became very, um, their programming became very, um, slow to react. And frontline's always been slow to react for us, in my, in my experience.
So it doesn't sound like we're going to be able to solve the fundamental problems with, you know, with, at, at the end, um, the developer, the software, um, owner. But you are offering help, but it sounds to me like parents and teachers still, uh, need information about who to call for help. And so, um, if there's some way that we can publish that that's more accessible.
Yeah, we may just need to do some quick, um, how-to videos for our teachers so they know how to move those grades over to the right system.
I mean, teachers I'm talking to are not, are the ones that are pretty technically savvy. So I'm not really sure it's a, it's a teacher-level issue. But, um, obviously you guys are talking to more people than, than I am, so.
It's just an extra step, an extra thing. Um, I will say, though, on videos, um, uh, another piece that I did not mention is that those, those folks that are working on those, um, two templates at each campus, as well as others, they are creating a video repository of if you want to do this in Canvas, this is how you do that. And so what I think is phenomenal, um, and like I said, we, Ms. Maryfield, she was, um, awarded earlier and she deserves it, and then Mrs. O'Neill at Waco High as well. But, um, th- this is from a teacher's perspective in terms of what they feel they need as teachers. And, um, they have volunteered to take that on and do that, and they want to. That's the other thing I've said, don't, you know, if you don't want to or you can't, if this is too much. And they're like, no, 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 we want to. And so, um, they are, they're doing a really great job. And so I'm excited to see what that's going, how that's going to turn out.
And if I can address the parent and, and student, uh, information on the website in the COVID-19, there is a technology resources part in there that does have a direct line phone number for our student help desk. It's also a parent help desk and we answer those phone calls all day long. And as well as, uh, student resource documents and, and how to do things variously throughout the system.
I, I, you have done a, your department's done a great job at responding to folks who, uh, contact you. I, I think probably, I would guess, there's still people frustrated and they still don't know who to, who to call.
Yeah, and that's, you know, the silent, um, frustration that's out there is the ones that will get you. And because that, you know, they're, they're living through, um, issues that they're not telling anybody about. Um, so, or they tried to call and because our phones were busy, they just didn't call back. Or, you know, there's some, there's some frustration level in that and we, and we do understand that. So, um, but yeah, we, we can definitely beef up that website to, to where it had some parent resources as well.
And unfortunately, we were in a bad spot with our system prior to COVID. And this has just exa- exasperated the problems that we have with, uh, and we're just having to work through those. And Jerry, of course, has inherited, inherited those. And so we appreciate his work to help us unravel it.
Um, Mrs. Teagle? Uh, I just wanted to say thank you that I realize that we've gone to remote instruction basically overnight and that this is a learning curve. But I do, I like the idea of how-to videos. If there's some way as, um, we can hack the system and we can give teachers kind of the shortcuts to be able to try to, um, get the data from one system to the another. Um, I think short how-to videos are probably the easiest. That's people, that's why people go to YouTube. Um, and so, yeah, if there's just some way we can get the resources in their hands and not wait for them to ask for it. Because I think that at this point in time, just like everyone, COVID has thrown everyone, uh, a curveball. And I think the programmers are scrambling also to try to get some of these systems to communicate, uh, back and forth. And so I think i- in any way that we can kind of help, I think that the talking between the systems is going to help parents. It's going to help students. It'll help teachers. And so if there's, again, any way we can do a how-to video or any hacks that we can, um, uh, find in the system, I think would be really greatly appreciated.
Well, it's been said, but I don't think that it can be said enough, that just what our teachers have done in such a short amount of time. Because typically this type of a rollout and, um, learning about blended learning and all of those things take place over a much longer time period. Um, minus, you know, not even to mention the infrastructure that we've, we've had, you know, to, to work on. And so, um, and then our administrators, of course, as well with, you know, leading their teachers. And so, um, they just, I know they're tired and, you know, everyone is, but they, they really do deserve a lot, a lot of praise for all that they've done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is homeless outreach services, Dr. Wiggle.
All right. Good evening, uh, y'all. Didn't think about short people. All right, we'll try this again. Is that, is that a little bit better? So, uh, good evening, I'm Kathy Wiggle. And, um, I'm going to share a little bit tonight, just very briefly, um, about some of the things that we, um, are able to do because of the support we receive from our community partners and collaborators. That allows us to do so much more than just hand out backpacks and school supplies. And that, of course, starts with y'all. And so I do want to thank you from a district perspective for the support that we receive. So our office is grant-funded. Um, we have three professional staff, myself, Ms. Cecilia Paget, who is our family specialist, and Ms. Kat Strasberger, who is the specialist working with our high school students. And then we have a part-time data clerk, Savannah Allen, um, is a Baylor student who keeps our spreadsheets, all our data required for our grant. Next slide. I want to start by acknowledging something that research so clearly shows us and that our students, for the most part, are well aware of, that education is the pathway out of homelessness. And you can see the data there. And of course, we're talking about homelessness defined by the McKinney-Bento Assistance Acts, Act, which defines student homelessness as, uh, students who lack a fixed, adequate or regular nighttime residence. And what that looks like nationally, it looks the same here locally. Um, it includes, of course, families in shelters, uh, families in motels and hotels. Also, um, the vast majority of students who are identified as McKinney-Bento homeless are living doubled up due to some kind of a hardship. And that's usually going to be about 75% of the total number. But it also includes families who are unsheltered. They are in their car, they've been evicted and don't know where they're going to go. Um, or they are living in substandard housing. Uh, they don't have running water, they don't have utilities. In any given school year, we'll have between 12 to 16 families who meet that criteria for student homelessness. Numbers-wise, right now, as of probably this morning, we're at about 630 students we've identified, uh, under the criteria of McKinney-Bento. And we are ahead of where we were last year. Um, last year, we ended the year at 737. So we anticipate that number to continue to go up, unfortunately, particularly if the moratorium on evictions is not extended past December 31st. So that, that's very concerning to us, of course. Okay, next slide. This is a quote from one of our students. This is how she described the influence of homelessness on her education. It is the biggest distraction. When you're moving a lot, so you don't have anywhere to keep your things. Uh, because you're in transition, you, you know, we give our students backpacks, school supplies, but if you're moving a lot, often they're going to lose those. Um, if you're in person, you might not have clean clothes to go to school. It, there's so many challenges that our students have to overcome and they're so resilient to do it. Um, so I want to talk about some of the supports. I'm just going to highlight a few of our collaborations that enable us to provide those wraparound services so students can succeed in school. That starts with the Baylor School of Social Work. We could not do what we do for our students without our social work interns. So, uh, we're able to place master-level social work interns on our high school campuses to provide one-on-one case management. And the numbers you're seeing are numbers from last year. Um, and that is critical to get our students to the finish line and to graduate. If our students are seniors, we will do everything in our power and within the law to see that they can graduate. And case management is a critical piece of that. We are thankful for Seventh and James Baptist Church. Their volunteers run our uniform program. So our grant allows us to buy the clothing items, shirts, pants, shoes, coats. Um, they are stored at Seventh and James. And when a parent requests those items, we send the request, their volunteers put the order together, we pick it up and deliver it to the family. So that's great. We, again, we wouldn't be able to do that on our own. Sanctuary House is a pretty unique program that, um, those of you that have been on the board may have heard about or remember us talking about. It's a collaboration between Waco ISD Homeless Outreach, um, the Waco Housing Authority and Salvation Army. So Waco Housing Authority reserves two apartments for Waco ISD families at, uh, Kate Ross, uh, public housing right down the street. And so these are reserved for families who need that transitional housing while they're waiting for permanent housing. So either they've exited a shelter or the shelter is full, or they're a family that's in their car. So they can, uh, be in those apartments for 90 days. And during that time, the Salvation Army is working with them to be able to place them into permanent housing. And the Family Solutions Program at Methodist Children's Home is providing the case management so that once the family gets into permanent housing, they're able to sustain that. So it's a really unique program. You can see the students we've housed since the program began. Unfortunately, it's been on hiatus since this summer. The last family moved out this summer. And Waco Housing Authority was not able to go in and update, you know, the apartments, whatever needed to be done. But we are hoping to get that back up and going beginning in January. And then you heard a little bit tonight, uh, about The Cove. Uh, The Cove provides a tremendous wraparound support services for our high school students. And our grant actually allows us to pay for tutors at The Cove. So, um, they've been able to expand their hours, um, uh, and open during the school day for our remote learners who need help. And so they can go to The Cove and there's a tutor there that can help them if they're struggling, even something as simple as logging on and working through the technology. Um, and as, after school as well. So we're very grateful for their partnership. Okay, next slide. I wanted to, um, highlight a program that you may have heard or read about, or you're probably going to hear about. And that is the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program. It is a federal grant through, um, Housing and Urban Development that, um, our community won through the Heart of Texas Homeless Coalition. A $2.23 million grant over the next two years to pilot programs to end youth homelessness for unaccompanied youth between the ages of 16 and 24. So, um, six programs, uh, are funded through this grant. And three of those focus on high school-age youth. In all of the programs, education has to be a big piece of what they do. Because we're the biggest school district in the Six County region funded by the grant, we are leading the work as far as the education piece goes. As a result of that, because that's been ongoing for over a year now, uh, we've been recognized by NCHE, which is the Technical Assistance Arm of the Department of Education. Um, we've been recognized for leading out in that work. We received a $2,500 honorarium that our office can use to support our unaccompanied youth as they participate in these programs. So most of them are rolling out sometime between, uh, December and January. And so you'll be hearing about those over the next two years. And I wanted to put that on your radar. Okay. No, sure.
So, six or 700 homeless kids in WISD, I think I heard that number right. And then a $2.3 million grant to help try to address that homelessness. And I'm trying to imagine-
A specific population of homeless. A specific population of homelessness.
Okay, subset of that, 600 or 700, okay. I'm just trying to imagine what kind of projects they're actually going to take on that are going to address that need.
Okay, there are six projects that are funded. Two of them will provide rapid rehousing plus, meaning that they can provide assistance beyond up to three years for anyone 18 or older, because this is a population that the grant funds, 16 to 24-year-olds. So there's two housing programs. There's funding for, we do have a crisis, a respite center, a crisis center for high school age youth. And so the program, one grant is going to extend, beds are reserved in the respite center for high school age youth, like 16 and 17-year-olds who don't yet qualify for housing. One program is at The Cove. For them to be able to provide additional wraparound services and extend their hours, they'll now be open. I don't want to get it wrong, but it's something like, they'll be serving students all day and then continue as they have been doing after school as well. But they will be able to provide some additional supportive services they've not had the funding for. One program is a mobile unit that will go throughout the Six County region, particularly trying to engage students who are currently out of school to get them back in school. And again, being able to provide those wraparound services, including mental health services. Is that six? What have I left out? I can't remember. I'm sorry off the top of my head, but.
To me specifically combating homelessness means getting them in a house.
Correct. Yeah, for our-
The rest of the stuff is, is nice. And I get that, the wraparound services, whatever that man tail. I, I don't entirely understand the term, but I'm just sort of wondering how they could meaningfully address that for those kids.
So for 18, 18 and older, yes, we have, we have funding for that. It's our high school age.
But under 18, you don't really qualify for federal housing help, so. Okay, so if you're an unaccompanied youth, then arguably, yeah, okay.
You're singing my song. I spent a year researching, we really wanted to be able to do a host home program that would be funded through this. And we legally were not able to do it, so.
Well, after the grant money runs out, you've got to, it's not a temporary problem, really.
Right. And but the, these programs will be eligible after the grant ends in two years to, for that funding to continue through the continuum of care in our community. So there'll still be federal money, just different federal money available to continue the programs if they're successful. So, and they, yeah, they'll, they will have to come up with the way they're, the metrics that they're using to, to measure that, so. Yeah, we're working on the education piece. So that's, that's what I can probably speak to the most. But you're right, housing is, is key. And that's a big issue here in Waco.
Thank you so much for-
Yeah, so I just, I do want to end by just also recognizing that we did have an 80% graduation rate for our homeless students this past year. Compared to like a national homeless graduation rate is somewhere between, it fluctuates, but 52 to 60%. So I feel like the collaborations we have on campus are critical for us. Those are the people, those are boots on the ground. They're the first ones to lay eyes on students. And so we're really thankful for, for them as well. And I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to Ms. Yolanda Williams and Dr. Rochelle Warren for their support for our program. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Ms. Quarterback? Yeah, I was just saying, thank you so much for all this information. You know, homelessness is a very real situation for a lot of our families in our district. And I myself found myself trying to help a family at like four in the evening that were getting evicted that evening to get housing. And, you know, knowing about the services and the sanctuary, it's just, you know, these, these things, they really do help bring some stability to families in a very unstable time. And I know that, I mean, I'm slightly discouraged that, you know, we've got 630 students this far already identified. And that is a little bit more than we had the previous year. But I guess, you know, COVID does, does things to everyone.
And one of the things we don't know is, so we have, our grant, we had additional grant funding this year. And so we have an extra staff position this year as well. And so are the numbers more because of COVID or because we're doing a better job identifying students? It's probably both, I think. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeBeere, you're up. Announcements.
Thank you, Madam President. Between now and your next meeting, we have obviously a lot of holiday celebrations. But we also have a lot of business that takes place when we come back, starting with our In-Service Day on January 4th. That day, the lotteries for Lake Air, Montessori, and Hillcrest PDS will open, as well as the application process for Atlas. Then, of course, as we talked about earlier this evening, we have the first Community Advisory Committee meeting on January 11th. We actually have a second before we get to your monthly meeting. That second Community Advisory Meeting is on January 25th. And then your regular monthly meeting is later that week on the 28th. So we are excited for the holiday season and even more excited for everything that kicks off as soon as we head back with staff on January 4th and with students back for the first day of in-person instruction on January 5th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned. I want to say, actually, before we formally adjourn, Mr. Manning couldn't join us tonight. And along with all of our staff and families who are struggling with COVID, either a family member or themselves, our hearts go out to them. Our prayers, our thoughts go to Mr. Manning tonight and his family and his own personal struggle with COVID-19 and his family. And just if you remember him tonight, we missed him. We're sorry he's not here. But he's not alone. There are a lot of families right now that are struggling. And the holidays are going to be hard. It's going to be hard for people who are going to be alone. So with that, we wish everybody is able to get some rest and take some time for themselves because it's not going to be over when we get back in January, unfortunately. But at least maybe there's light at the end of the tunnel. So with that, thank you and wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Good night.